All right. Good morning.
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside. Also on our website, there is also an automatic external defibrillator on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning to everyone. We will begin with the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent due to COVID. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent due to being in Israel. Commissioner Morgan.
Present.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 28, 2022, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, July 19, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Morning.
Larry Stewart, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, 68132 Omaha. This morning, I want to bring up why my property taxes are so high. This morning, I did read an article out of the Omaha World Herald about a new nonprofit group which aims to create LGBTQ+ community center in Omaha. And it is written by a gentleman that usually writes articles for the board and the city council, Chris Burback. He used to be present most of the time, but now he does it online, I guess. But this is one example where taxes are high. No doubt, this new community center will not be entirely funded by philanthropic organizations, and somebody will be down here looking for taxpayer money to help fund it or even get a building for them under the guise of TIF money. And it's really time to stop funding all of these things, particularly something like this, which is possibly unconstitutional because it is recognizing special groups. They're not recognizing special groups such as taxpayers that have to sell their property or have to move out of Nebraska or Omaha because they can't afford it. One reason they can't afford it is all these programs. I have been here often enough over the last four to five years that I see these people come down here and ask for money, and they usually get it. And there's piles of it in the budget today, which, by the way, you probably could scratch some of those off of the budget before you vote on it. And taxpayers really do expect our representatives to represent us by restraining spending. There's nothing in the Constitution, federal or state, about providing money for all of these things that are maybe unnecessary and maybe unconstitutional. And to sum up then, another thing about our representatives and our time to be able to speak here for maybe five minutes if we're lucky. I brought with me a whole bunch of things, and I'm not going to read every one of them, but I am going to run through it real quick just to show to you that it's not just my words. These are words from nationally known writers and press news organizations about things that are wrong in our culture, our system, things that are maybe unconstitutional. CRT, et cetera, for example. It's right in the Communist Manifesto, canceling, cancel culture. In order to protect our culture and our way of life, we have to cancel some of the culture such as the anti-culture of Marxism. Time for politics, I guess. A nation destroying presidency, treason in America. America has been fundamentally transformed. Liberals get mugged by reality. Robert's Rules of Order, I guess you are all familiar with that, but your own rules take precedence, don't they? This is not a presentation, by the way. Government incompetence is destroying cities. Path of recovery. Most of the major cities are Democrat-run cities, and
One minute.
They're not doing too well. Crisis in the classrooms because of pandemic, remote learning, but also there are many articles about the rise nationwide in youth suicides, and a lot of those happen to be because of transgenderism confusion, identity confusion, and of course, social media that isn't necessarily good for them. Our democracy is their oligarchy. Well, it's not a democracy, and it should not be an oligarchy, American oligarchy. Those things do exist, and those are not my words. I did not write them. Thank you for your
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. We have resolutions D, E, and F. There is no need for an executive session, so the motion could include adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Please note, our Douglas County Board of Corrections is rescheduled for Tuesday, July 19, so we will move into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan.
Present.
Commissioner Rogers.
Present.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 28, 2022, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next is the consent agenda, items A through H. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next are recognition and proclamations. We have two resolutions recognizing Susan Clark for her service on the Douglas County Planning Commission and resolution recognizing Murray McArdle for his service on the Douglas County Planning Commission. I do not believe they are present, but we do thank them for their service to Douglas County. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next are citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our public hearing. We have one public hearing, a resolution to approve a special use permit to operate a major home occupation on approximately one acre of residential property, specifically firearm sales and transfers. This was, the public hearing was continued from Tuesday, June 7, 2022, and my understanding is, is we want to continue this until July 26. All right. Do we have a motion to extend, continue the public hearing until Tuesday, June 26?
July 26.
I mean, July.
July, sorry.
July 26.
Madam Chair, sorry, just to clarify, we're not reopening anything right now because we wouldn't be able to vote if that was the case, right?
So the public hearing remained, I'm going to give you a little bit longer answer if I may. Theresa York County Attorney's Office, the public hearing remained open from last week. It's my understanding they've communicated with the subject of the public hearing, and he knows that it's going to be continued one more time, but because we gave notice on the record last week, we want to give notice on the record this week so to note that it's been continued again. And so the public hearing will remain open but be continued to July 26.
Okay.
Okay.
If you're okay with it, then I'm good as well.
Okay.
But we still vote on that? Or we just stated that we're continuing?
I understand. So sorry, Dan. So yeah, let's go ahead and vote on the continuance like we did last time.
Okay. All right. Is there, did you make a motion? Commissioner Rogers?
Second.
And Commissioner Morgan, second at it. Please vote.
All right. Motion to continue the public hearing until July 26 passes five to zero.
Next is our committees, the first being the finance, the budget report as presented. And then we do have one ARPA funding item. It's approval of a resolution authorizing an award of $500,000 to the Omaha Economic Development Corp. for construction of a CHI Health Commissary Kitchen and Dietary Call Center. And this is being funded through the, or invested through the funds of Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Rogers. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments?
Larry Stewart, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I tried to vote against this last board meeting since I didn't get a chance to this time, but I guess you could change your vote. I just want to point out that documents and things that I've read online without doing weeks' worth of research, when I read about this in your documents online, it's not real clear as to what this really is. Are there no food kitchens in Omaha that supply hospitals and other venues that provide food for people, not just people on the street or homeless, but people in general, maybe even students at schools? How do we help an organization buy a building and give TIF financing to start a new food services or cafeteria, whatever you want to call it? It is a health commissary by a hospital. Yes, hospital, but probably nonprofit. But why are we funding a hospital's kitchen operation? Now, one of the words that used to describe this was economic development corporation. Okay, somebody formed their own corporation, and they're getting some funding. But it doesn't show on this resolution what I read in the newspaper about it's being called something like a opportunity zone, a do center like the one at 72nd that's going to be demolished to make room for a library. Here we are funding something, again, that's not really clear to the taxpayers as we're footing the bill. I wish you would have a debate amongst yourselves on this to explain it to us in clear terms, that this is only for specific people, not for the city of Omaha. Who exactly is this for? And why are we helping CHI Health do this? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can just clarify for the record, I want to thank Commissioner Morgan for his help on this. This is where his mayoral tenure comes in. He was pretty influential in working with this organization when he was mayor. I want to just clear, the project is not funding CHI. The project is funding the Omaha Economic Development Corp. to renovate this building which they will lease to CHI. There was a point in time when the Creighton University had its medical center on 30th that there was food processing out of there that moved, taking some jobs with it for individuals that were in the community. When this comes back, it will bring those jobs back there to the community where most of those people reside with the opportunity to add. Right now, it probably brings somewhere about 70 jobs back, I think, with the possibility to get that up to 100 or so in the future. So it rehabs the building to make it applicable. It will provide food for that and some other entities, and also with the possibility of excess capacity that runs over to provide it to some of the other food needs around the community. So that's what it does for the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the address is roughly around 20th and Paul, I think. I think it has a motion, right?
Yep. There was a motion and a second.
Yes.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next is our human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. No legislative items at this time. We do have need for an executive session for labor negotiations. Is there a motion to go into executive session for labor negotiations?
I want to mention about Jill Laramie, if I do presentation.
I was going to
Okay. You can state that. I just wanted to be sure.
That's fine. Is there a motion?
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote. And as you're voting, as Commissioner Morgan mentioned, when we come out, we will have a new meeting, and that's our agenda for our budget meeting. It is our public hearing on our budget, and we will take that up as soon as we get out of executive session and adjourned from our Board of Commissioners meeting.
Commissioner Friend. Motion passes five to zero.
Could I get a motion to reconvene and adjourn?
Recording in progress.
So can I get a motion to reconvene and adjourn? I have to... Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
For those waiting for us to get out of executive session, the law had changed and so to do a budget hearing you actually have to go into a different meeting than your regularly scheduled meeting for the budget hearing, public budget hearing. So we finished our Board of Commissioners meeting, now we're going to go into the budget hearing as a separate meeting, so that's why we had to do it the way we did it. So with that, we are still... Good morning, everyone. We are here for the agenda for our budget hearing, our public hearing. Roque, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent due to COVID. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is in Israel for a work-related matter, I believe. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. This is the public hearing, this is our budget hearing, and adoption of the requested fiscal year 2022-23 Douglas County budget, $520.92, and our Finance Director, Joe Lorenz, will walk us through what we are going to be talking about.
Could I get a motion to reconvene and adjourn?
Recording in progress.
So can I get a motion to reconvene and adjourn? I have to. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
For those waiting for us to get out of executive session, the law had changed, and so to do a budget hearing, you actually have to go into a different meeting than your regularly scheduled meeting for the budget hearing, public budget hearing. So we finished our Board of Commissioners meeting. Now we're going to go into the budget hearing as a separate meeting. So that's why we had to do the way we did it. So with that, we are still. Good morning, everyone. We are here for the agenda for our budget hearing, our public hearing. Roque, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent due to COVID. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is in Israel. Work related matter, I believe. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. This is the public hearing. This is our budget hearing and adoption of the requested fiscal year 2022-23 Douglas County budget. And our Finance Director, Joe Lorenz, will walk us through what we are going to be talking about today. Where'd Joe go? Oh, there he is.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We've been working on the budget for the past few months and got to the point where we're ready to present it and put it forward to the Commissioners for approval. So I'm going to take you through about 10 charts that summarize the budget. And we could go through that and answer any questions that you would have. So I'm going to start out with what the tax levy has been for the past 10 years in Douglas County. And you can see over the past 10 years, we've had one rate increase, and that was very specific, penny and a half to fund the Juvenile Justice Center project across the street. And we did that a little over three years ago. So as you see this, that accounts for the penny and a half increase. But otherwise, the tax levy has basically been flat over that period. Another key point that I think is always very important when we do our budget, when property tax owners get their property tax bill, you know, it's broken out into a lot of different ways. But this is where we always like to emphasize that of everybody's total amount of property tax that they pay, Douglas County's percentage of that is only about 13.4%. The City of Omaha is about 21 and 1/4%. And the lion's share, and really over, in this case, it's close to 56% of property tax dollars go to fund the schools. And here's an example of Omaha Public Schools. And then there's about 10% that goes to a number of smaller functions and organizations. But I think there's a lot of discussion in Nebraska all the time about why property taxes are so high. And I think you look at this, and it's because it's the way public schools are funded in Nebraska. You know, the lion's share comes out of property tax. But if you look at direct state aid to schools, Nebraska ranks in the bottom 10% of direct state aid. And I think that's an issue that they don't like to talk about in Lincoln a lot. But this is a chart that really highlights that issue. So as we put together the budget, we had some key assumptions. Property tax proceeds would increase by 6 and 1/2%. That number is based on the data we received from the County Assessor's Office that shows that going into the round with the Board of Equalization, I think taxes, it might have been even higher, but we assume there was going to be probably a percent that would come out through the Board of Equalization action. So we use 6 and 1/2%, which is the exact same rate that the City of Omaha used. We also assume that fund revenues will be at least equal to the prior year. That's primarily the cost of services being provided by the county departments. We assume that department wage and salary expense will increase by 4% a year with all other expenses being flat year over year. And then the assumption is that.
For those on Zoom, could you please?
That departments will not exceed their budget targets in their request budget submissions. So in regards to that last point, there were five departments that came in and that the numbers included in the budget were more than their target numbers. The sheriff is $500,000 over, although they initially came in at $850,000 over. So we reduced it by $350,000. And that's based on their request to hire six additional sworn officers to work and administer the new Juvenile Justice Center, which will be opening late next spring. Public defense. We did have a county finance committee where a meeting on this, and also all these people came and presented at a Tuesday board meeting.
Please pause for one second. They can't hear on Zoom right now.
Next one. No, back, back, back.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. So you can see there were five departments that the budget came in over target. And I think the point to make here is that four of those departments are in the criminal justice system. And that's kind of a reoccurring area that we've been talking about for a few years is that the criminal justice system is, the costs are increasing at a rate, you know, a fair amount above inflation. And, you know, sometimes I say it's the usual suspects in that every year they kind of come in above target. And that, like I say, there's a bigger macro issue here, and that's just, you know, where we're trending in the criminal justice system. Another issue that was specific to this year regards payment in lieu of taxes that the county receives from OPPD. There was a, very late in the game, a formula change recommended by the State Auditor's Office, which resulted in immediate reduction in the amount of payment in lieu from $4 million to $1.4 million, which kind of, like I say, very late, gave us a tax revenue reduction of $2.6 million. You know, that's a complicated case that we are currently working with the county attorney and the county treasurer and the different school districts in the City of Omaha on to see if a solution can be reached. But in the short term, what we were able to do in putting together this budget is to take a potential offset from the inheritance tax proceeds, which this year ran at a record level, and we collected a little over $19 million, which was over $7 million over the budget amount of $12 million. So we took some inheritance tax money via transfer and assumed that would cover the $2.6 million shortfall that we had. But the issue here is given to changes to the inheritance tax rates approved by the state legislature this past session. This is only a short-term solution to the payment of taxes issue. As, you know, like I said, this was a record amount this year, and it will go down next year under the new tax rates. And as I said, discussions are going on about how to deal with this payment in lieu of taxes issue, which affects both the city and the county as well as some of the school districts. So we're at the public hearing. And again, the summary of the proposed budget is that the key point is that it contains no increase in the tax levy on assessed property values. And it assumes a 6 and 1/2% increase in total county assessed property values. We will get the final actual number in August 20th from the county assessor. The budget, well, this year also, in the past year and again in this year, Douglas County received $55.5 million in ARPA funding, which we've excluded from the calculation because, well, they're not one-time. In this case, I guess it was two-time money. But, you know, next year, we will not be receiving that funding. So if you exclude that, the total budget for the county is $465 million, which is 1.4% above last year's adopted budget. The reason that it's really only 1.4% above is there's a $7.6 million decrease in pandemic-related expenses at the county health department, which was running at inflated levels for the past two years because of the pandemic. So that went down. But the general fund budget of $242 million is 5.2% above last year's adopted budget due to increased expenses for the criminal justice system, which I've just been talking about, and also increased payroll and employee benefit expenses. As we're really seeing that in this new inflationary environment, you know, the county government is essentially a service organization, and we have 2,300 to 2,400 employees. And those employees, as we've just been discussing in executive session, have, are coming back to us and expressing the need to help them out with these increased expenses being driven by inflation. And so that, some of these things are in there. You know, we were, last year, we had to build in an increase to people at the Health Center for Nurses because there was a nursing shortage. There's other changes going on in with first responders. And so it's a tricky labor environment that's driving increased costs there. So as I said, the final tax rate will occur after the final valuation is certified on August 20. Couple comments here in terms of our sources of revenue. The county still sits on kind of a one-legged stool and has a very high dependence on property tax. The county doesn't collect any sales tax or certainly not any income tax. So property tax is the primary vehicle of revenue for the county, accounting for about 46% of our revenue. And the only other one that's in double digits is the general fund department revenues, which come from the services provided by those departments and the fees they charge. One interesting point that I alluded to earlier was inheritance tax. As you can see, the county uses what we call fund transfers to help us out in certain operations, particularly the Health Center, the Community Mental Health Center, and the Health Department. And so this year, we are using $16.5 million of inheritance tax funding to fund those different county operations. We really don't put it towards the general fund. We put it towards more of the other funds that provide, you know, care and needs of the county. And so that amount is up this year because we had, you know, a big increase in inheritance tax proceeds. And we're able to put it to use into those services that we provide. And the other key point here is, here's the valuation chart. You can see these are what the changes in taxable valuation have been for about the past 20 years. It's interesting, you could see over that period, the valuations have more than doubled. So, you know, real estate in Douglas County has shown strong growth, although it's not really linear. We've had periods like the last five or six years where there's been strong growth. But if you go to a period of, you know, maybe 10 years ago, there was about four or five years where property tax values were increasing under 2% a year. And in those years, those are very tough years for the county in terms of putting the budget together and making the budget work. So that's kind of the, you know, long-term trend on it. And you can see that right now, we're assuming 6 and 1/2%. And it should be pretty close to that when we get the final valuations in August. And with that, I would open it up to any questions.
Commissioner Morgan.
Joe, thank you.
Very much. Want to mention a couple things. On the inheritance, haven't we been running closer to $10 to $12 million the last year?
12 to 13, yeah.
Yeah. So this was a.
Record year.
Record year, which was most helpful because of the payment in lieu of, we lost approximately $2.5 million. And you correct me on these numbers.
No, you're right.
And then next year, because of some changes in the legislature, that number would have been reduced if that was in effect right now by what amount? About?
Yeah, we're.
$2 million or more?
$2 million. But given that we've had kind of strong receipts the past two years, we're projecting inheritance tax to bring in about $13 million next year. That's what's in the budget.
So that's something that we all have to be aware of, the changes that are going to take place. So that was most helpful, that that new statute isn't in effect right now, or we would be in serious decision-making times. Lastly, I just want to be sure of this. When you talk about the increase in the taxable income, does this include, when you do the valuations, does it include TIF, which we're not getting that money on, meaning for the next 15 years or 12 years or whatever? Would these numbers possibly be a bit inflated because there's a tremendous amount of TIF?
These are actual proceeds that we receive. So I think, you know, when we get that from the assessor's office, I think when they send the tax bills out and things like that, they are factoring in the TIFs that have been approved.
Yeah, but you're not seeing some of those dollars.
No, I mean, certainly some of these big projects that are going forward are not going to be incremental revenue for us for probably at least 10 years, right? Under TIF.
And under the new TIF, again, the statute, I think it goes out 20 years, you know, on some of those. Okay. Thank you very much again for your presentation and your work with Commissioner Friend and myself.
Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Joe, yes, thank you for. PJ knew you well, but I've gotten to know you pretty well over the last six months, and it's been pretty enjoyable. I didn't turn my light on to give you all kinds of superlatives. However, you do a great job. I wanted people to understand, you did a great job laying out what a county budget really looks like. And I think for anybody who's willing to listen to what we do at nine o'clock on a, usually on a Tuesday morning, I think it's important to understand what Joe said right out of the gate. It's, we implement program. The people of this county want us to implement programs, programs that they want. And even if they don't want it, it could be mandated by the state of Nebraska or by the feds. Real quick, I don't think Joe mentioned this. We have 56 mandated services at the county level, Douglas County. Either mandated by the feds or mandated by the state. Now, some of those. Well, I'll get to that in a minute. Some of those are reimbursed to a certain degree. A certain percentage of it is reimbursed. 22 non-mandated services at the county level. So in other words, if they went away, nobody's going to say anything to us except our, a lot of constituents who said, hey, those services went away. One of those happens to be the Health Center. Not all of it's mandated. But there's an awful lot of people that find value in that institution in Douglas County. institution in Douglas County. Of those 14 services, both mandated and non-mandated, that are being subsidized by the state and the feds, it's hardly ever subsidized to a, to 100%. So in other words, they're saying, not, the state's not only saying, you've got to do this at the county level. They do it to cities, they do it to school boards, they do it to, to counties. The state and the feds say, you have to do it, and then when we do it, we realize that we have the same type of problems that the private sector has. The cost of business is going up, and over the last couple of years, it's gone up dramatically. We increased, as Joe mentioned, we increased the property tax assessments in this county to the tune of 6.5%. I've also brought up on this, in this forum, in this scenario, that it's not matching the inflation rate. So we're not increasing our levy lid. Property taxes went up to the tune of 6.5%, and the cost of living went up, for the most part, at, to the tune of 8.25%. Here, this isn't a lecture, this is a point. So you take those 56 mandated services, we get 13% of the property tax revenue, that's all the taxing authority we have, and we got to pay for all of them. I wake up in the morning in a cold sweat, because I look at these numbers when I grab them, and I go, how, how do we do our business? How are we going to do our business going forward? The thing that keeps me up when I look at them, and I think it does with all the commissioners, is when I look a year or two years down the road, because my diatribe is almost over. When mortgage interest rates hit 6.2% or 6.3% or 6.4%, people quit buying houses, and, and those assessments keep, quit going up, and they will.
One minute.
That's when we have issues. That's when we have concerns. Those 56 mandated services that we provide are not on the table. So guess what we do? We go back and we find the 22 non-mandated services, the ones the fed and the state say, yeah, don't worry about it, it's up to you. And then we start slashing and burning. And I, I may be around when we start slashing and burning, I may not. It depends on what the voters want it. But the bottom line is, there's some stuff coming that's going to be very interesting. It may not be coming today, it may not be coming tomorrow, it's going to be coming soon. And I'm not Nostradamus, but I'll tell you this, when I look at those numbers and I, and I wipe the cold sweat away, it's not really cold sweat. It, it, when I, when I wipe my eyes and look at them again, I realize we've got problems. And until the state, and until the feds, and until we, as policymakers, really grab hold of them,
Time.
The problems continue, right? Thank you.
Thank you. There, at this point, aren't any other commissioner lights on at this point? Do you have one more?
Can I, one more thing I forgot to mention was, I talked about the penny and a half that we put for the new Justice Center across the street. I just want to give a little update. When we first looked at it, we thought the cost could be up to three cents, and we said, let's take a penny and a half and, and see what happens. And I'm, I'm pleased to report that the construction across the street is on time and on budget. So that's helped us, and also this increase in property tax values, we've been, you know, putting that away into the juvenile justice fund, and so we're well-funded to complete that project. And at this point, in, certainly in the near term, I would not anticipate any further property tax increase being driven by the new juvenile justice center.
Good. All right, again, there are no other commissioner lights on at this time. I'll turn it over to those in the room here, if anyone would like to address the board of commissioners on those budget hearing, or during this budget hearing. No, Jim, not yet. We're in the room, not on Zoom yet.
Doug Kagan, 416 South 130th Street, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. We thank commissioners for not proposing a property tax rate increase. However, we believe that the county could cut expenditures to allow for tax rate decrease now or in near future, because four county departments that have escalating expenses over target budgets are part of the criminal justice system, and because of the formula change for payment in lieu of taxes, we believe the county should concentrate on crime prevention and detection to decrease costs in these four areas with use of increased amounts of inheritance tax money. To curtail increased employee expenses, reduce employee overtime, and salary step increases in longevity pay, and request county employees to pay a larger share of their health care premiums. Eliminate the law library and county extension service. Outsource microfilm responsibilities, garage work, and mailroom. Decrease expenses for non-mandated services specifically at the health center, which continues to hemorrhage thousands of dollars. Utilize cutbacks suggested by the past study done for the county by Health Management Associates that was done over 10 years ago, several that we list here. Contract with another hospital or UNMC for necessary mental health services. Concentrate efforts on finding places to cut the budget through targeted reductions. Service-only subsidized patients that the county must legally serve. Close assisted living facilities, which numerous private entities currently provide. Close the nursing home section for all patients for whom other facilities are available. Close health center units for which elimination would not otherwise increase county costs. Refuse transfers from other nursing facilities, and adopt stricter admissions policies. The health center places too much emphasis on gaining revenue instead of cutting costs. We encourage the county board to quickly finalize a plan of action, and then establish a tracking mechanism to track the progress on an improved plan until completion. Our reasoning comes from our belief that a private company diligently would implement many of, many of the suggestions provided by Health Management Associates. Among other savings, a private company would control the skyrocketing personnel costs in employee wages and healthcare and other benefits. Actively lobby the legislature to decrease the number of mandated services and programs required. Optimize reimbursements from state government, end dumping of patients from other nursing facilities, and implement electronic health records like private pharmacies and physician offices for efficiency and added safety. Most importantly, a private company would produce financial data at each sub-department level with enough detail, currently not done, to allow private management to make better decisions based on costs and revenues precisely for each sub-department. In addition, we encourage the board to closely examine other non-mandated services in the county budget that deserve scrutiny of their expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doug. Anyone else in the room wishing to speak to the board during this budget hearing? I will now move to Zoom. We have one hand up. Jim Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Joe, thanks for this report. Just a couple of clerical things. A few of the PowerPoint items were not included in the handout, and if you could amend that, they probably came in late to include those. That would be good. There were a list of departments that had exceeded the recommendations, and I think it totaled 1.1 million. That, there was a, a payment in lieu of taxes page that was not included in the, in the backup documents. And the public hearing summary for future reference listed this hearing going off at 9:00 AM. I don't think that it actually began until 10:30, and if it's going to be for the public, we should probably give them an accurate time when they could come on, taking time out of their day to participate in this, which I hope that we can do going forward. This is a good start at an appropriations process, but it's just a start. One 20, 30-minute hearing on a half-billion-dollar budget, I think, doesn't cover the waterfront in terms of a best practices for an appropriations process, but this is a good start. What I would recommend is the board schedule a subsequent budget follow-up hearing, because there are a lot of questions here that probably can't be addressed in the limited time that we have available. And put it on a time certain so that people don't check in at nine o'clock and wait around until 10:30 or quarter to 11 before they get their chance to actually participate. The, a couple of takeaways that I have from this is, the largest source of federal funding for Douglas County that I can find in a preliminary review of this is the $28.4 million that the Douglas County Health Center receives, primarily in Medicare and Medicaid funding, that offsets the $36.4 million budget, so that we have about $8 million outlay of county monies for the entire structure and services. I, I don't see a similar outlay for the corrections services, which has a $50.5 million budget, nor for the youth center, which has about a $10 million budget. So between the two of them, better part of $60 million, but those are probably ones that we really want to look at in terms of, are they doing things that aren't mandated by the state? I think they probably are. And if so, how do we rectify that? Maybe some of these services, and we see these services almost every meeting coming through on our consent calendar, mandated in the criminal justice system, as Commissioner Friend pointed out, that we should probably look at. That, I think, really begs for a separate and complete, comprehensive, and strategic overview of county functions. That would be ideally under the Finance Committee in their budget overview process, but would take more than just this once-a-year, half-hour PowerPoint to really delve into. And I would urge the Finance Committee to set up regular meetings, as have been held in the past, to conduct that kind of in-depth overview to allow taxpayer
One minute.
Participation in, in this as well. I think we can get some really good ideas from people. Just on a couple of other items, the percent increase or decrease on budget items is included for some, for instance, the Douglas County Correction Center, Douglas County Youth Center, but not for others. For instance, the Community Mental Health Center, the Justice Center, and the Douglas County Health Center, all of which did have variations either up or down, and it might be good to have those percentages included, like the percentage increase in the correction center of 7.3 and the percentage decrease in the youth center of 10.2. This is a great start. I commend the Finance folks, Joe, and the Finance Committee for putting this on the agenda.
Thank you, Jim.
I think we should probably do this again real soon. Thank you.
Thank you. No other hands, no other lights. This is the public hearing. I will just make a couple of comments that, as far as the budget goes, and Joe kind of pointed it out in terms of the criminal justice portion of our budget, which continues to rise. And again, it is an important function of, of ours. The one, and I did talk to the sheriff yesterday, area that I am really kind of concerned about is that we started off with eight deputies as an increase, and I thought we were at four, and we're not, we're at six additional. And that does concern me during this budgeting process. There were other positions, my understanding was, that were deleted to get us down to the six instead of the eight. But again, I, I just, I haven't, I haven't seen the justification as well as I think we should have for that amount, that number, to, to have in this budget. The Justice Center project, there's been conversation all along as to what that need is for increase, so all six aren't needed for that. So I am concerned about that, and I do understand that we've made a balanced budget by moving dollars from, you know, different pots around so that we could make this budget. But I think, as Commissioner Friend said, that's short-term. You know, we're going to be right back here next year, or throughout the, you know, after we, we approve this or not approve it, we're going to be back here to have these conversations. We're back, in my opinion, to that structural deficit that Commissioner Rogers and I have been a part of conversations for a very long time. That has never been taken care of. And to no fault of anybody's, I mean, we continue to see increases that we have to address, an increased need. But along with that does come those conversations that I think we have to have in terms of what we are providing. And that's everybody. That's just not the health center. And as the sheriff knows, we've talked about some of the things that they have that aren't mandated that we should be looking at. Corrections has services that are not mandated that, that we fund. I think it would be well, well, time well-served if our Finance Committee had taken an in-depth look at each one of those non-mandated services for, after this, and I think it's too late now, but after this, we start going one by one through those non-mandated services. It's easy to have that thrown out every year, we do it, that, that, you know, we have all these non-mandated services that we're funding, but let's take a look at them. Are those non-mandated services really saving the county money, or are they costing the county money? And take each one, one by one, with an in-depth look, with a fine-tooth comb, and see whether or not it truly is or isn't. And that includes everybody. Nobody's excluded from that conversation, in my opinion. So that's where I think we need to go. I was almost on the brink of not supporting this, because I think it is a little bit too much, if you will. But again, I think we've done a good job of making do with what we have before us in terms of revenues to make our budget work and provide the services that we need to provide to, to the community, to the county. Commissioner Friend?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm not, I, I didn't, I'm not pushing my light to one-up you or debate with you. What I, what I wanted to do is make it, make another quick point. Some of the points that Commissioner Borges and Chair Borges made were pretty interesting. What I found even more interesting, and this used to happen at the, it still does happen at the state level. Sheriff's Department, Public Defender, County Attorney. Amount over target, we all know what the numbers look like, they're just over a, just over a million dollars. You know what the unique part about all that is? All of those particular individuals that run those departments are elected officials. They also manage, those three areas, manage what I, I believe, in my personal opinion, are what the voters of Douglas County require of their county government. The sheriff, the public defender, and the county attorney. If, if the county If the county didn't have to pay for those things, show me anything else that's more, show me, show me the next important, they're all important, right? They really are. Show me the next important one. If we had to take away everything that the county did, what I would do is sit there and go, well, you can't take away law enforcement, you can't take away the public defender, and you can't take away the county attorney. Everything else, we'll figure it out. That sounds a little crass, and it sounds a little simplistic. Well, because I feel crass and simplistic right now. But Chair Borgeson makes a good point. I think the, to sum this up, I think we could probably, and we were dealing with this a little bit during, during our strategic, strategic planning, the first day of strategic planning, is to really go through some of these things and try to find out not just what the taxpayers want that we, that we're providing, that we may not have to provide, but also what they don't want. We all think we know, but I mean, until you have hearings like that, until you really dig in, you'd be surprised at what you don't know. So, Madam Chair, thank you, and Joe, thanks again. I think this is a decent budget based on the circumstances, and I think we have to move on. We're not kicking the can down the road. We're trying to plan for the future, and we know there's problems coming up, but I don't think we've got our head in the sand. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right.
Just one thing, Commissioner Borgeson, I agree with you about that whole issue about mandates, and I think we actually are right. We have a process in place right now where those can be examined, and that's the strategic planning that we're doing with the county departments. Because I really believe that, you know, what unfunded mandates should really be continued is a strategic issue. And I think that is something that, as Patrick Bloomingdale works with the individual departments, they should really examine those mandates, particularly the unfunded ones, and see if that's something we should continue with or try and phase out.
Thank you, Joe. And again, Commissioner Friend brought up a good, a good point in looking at those. And again, I'm not minimizing the criminal justice service providers within our county. Yes, they are overseen by elected officials, but the buck stops here. We're the ones who approve the budget. And I've been here long enough to where they're not going to those elected officials and complaining about the county spending, they're coming to us as commissioners who oversee the budgeting process. So when I talk about looking, and again, it's been said many times, we needed to look at those non-mandated, to me, it includes everybody, not just a certain one that someone wants to pick out and talk about. We need to look at that whole sheet that you had, that you referred to earlier, and really take an in-depth look at every department that has them. What are they doing? Are they mandated, not mandated? What are they costing? Are they saving? What's our return on investment? And I think that's easy to do, and we should do that in a more in-depth process than what we have done in the past. So. With that, there's no other, oh, Larry, go ahead.
Larry Storer, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you, Mr. Friend, Joe. And thank you, Mike, for your comments. And Marianne, you're correct. It is your responsibility and your duties to examine these things, and they're total line. You have to look at, nationwide, crime rates are way up, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But we have all these programs that people are getting money for, but it's not lowering the numbers. So start saying no to the people that want money for these programs, and start saying no to the people that are committing the crimes, including juveniles who can't seem to get along at school without causing trouble. It's not our job to pacify them. Yes, we need to make a difference, but do I need to spend my money to make a difference? Do you need to raise my taxes to make a difference? Why don't you tell the parents, or the fathers that aren't there, the teachers that aren't equipped, the principals that are afraid to do something because parents might get upset? And the school boards don't listen to parents. The school boards are wacko. They're not doing what people were designed to do in this country for education. The other thing, finally, is these outside organizations, and I know you don't like this, Marianne, but the national associations of whatever, counties, cities, governors, police, all write agenda propaganda for you to use. You don't serve them, you serve us. Thank you.
All right. With that, there are, again, we're at the time of the public hearing, no other comments. During the public hearing, what is the will of the board?
Madam.
I will close the public hearing. Sorry. I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? There is a motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Motion passes five to zero.
With that, we are, this meeting is concluded. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers.
Motion passes five to zero, we're adjourned at 11:16.